I'm alive, councillor Harris.
Thanks Lynne. Welcome everyone to the 2020 annual meeting. Can I ask everyone to keep their microphones muted unless invited to speak? Please have your mobile phones turned to silence. To assist the flow of our meeting, can I ask all members to raise their electronic hand on the system to indicate if they wish to speak? To unmute their microphones when invited to speak and to put back on to mute afterwards? And to ensure that you turn your camera on and face the camera when speaking? At the end of each item, I will ask if there is any objections to the motion. You may indicate an objection by raising your electronic hand. If there are no objections, I will consider that the matter to have consent of the meeting, unless a formal recorded vote is requested. As usual, the council will be filming and recording this meeting and it is currently live streaming. A copy of the film will be also uploaded to the council on the YouTube site in due course. All members have been sent a copy of the order papers. This is also available on the council's website. Colleagues, before the first item of business, I would like us to take a moment to reflect on what is happening in the world right now? And the impact of the Covid-19 on everyone. I'm sure that we've all had effects, been affected by the loss of a loved one and they are all in our thoughts at this sad time. I would also like to remember, our thoughts are also with Meghan Harley and her family from Halewood and all those who were affected by the Manchester Arena bombing, which happened three years ago today. We've also got to remember in our thoughts is councillor Eddie Robb, who recently passed away. Eddie previously served on this council for 12 years. Colleagues, can I ask you all to join me in a minute's silence as a sign of respect? Thank you. Thank you colleagues. Are there any apologies for absence?
Apologies have been received from councillor Burke and councillor Lily, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Gemma. Item one, is there any declarations of interest?
There are a number of declarations of interest referenced on the note of order paper and these interests will be recorded in the minutes of the meeting, Madam Mayor.
Item two, the election of the mayor for 2020/21. Can I invite nominations for the election of the mayor for Nosley for 2021? Councillor Morgan?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Can I move that councillor Frank Walsh be elected the mayor of De Burgh for the year 2020/21?
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Ashton?
I'd like to second that motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, it has been moved and seconded that councillor Frank Walsh will be elected as the mayor of De Burgh for the year of 2020 to 21. Are there any objections?
There are no objections, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Gemma. I therefore declare that councillor Frank Walsh will be elected of Nosley Borough Council for the year 2020 to 2021. Thank you.
My proposer, councillor Graham Morgan and my secretary councillor Jane Aston for nominating me as the mayor of Nosley for the coming year and also thank my fellow members of the council for supporting the nomination. It is a great privilege and an honour to be chosen to represent the borough of Nosley once again in this role. On behalf of the council, I would like to thank Jackie and Marie for all their hard work over the past 12 months. I am sure you will agree that they have both been excellent ambassadors for the borough. I am pleased that councillor Dot Johnson will be my mayoress and canon Malcolm Rogers from St Gabriel's Church in Highton has agreed to act as my chaplain during my mayoral year. During my year in office, I will be raising funds for Willowbrook Hospice, which offers care and support for adults with life limits and illnesses and is a charity that is very close to my heart, as I am one of the board's trustees. I know how hard fundraising can be at the best of times and I expect it to be even more challenging given the current circumstances. So I hope you will all support me in helping to raise money for this very worthy charity over the next 12 months. On behalf of myself and my mayoress, thank you once again. We are very much looking forward to our term in office and representing the borough of Nosley. Thank you. Colleagues, before we move on to the next item of business, I would like to move a vote of thanks for councillor Harris for all her sterling work as the mayor of De Burgh for the last two years, ably supported by her mayoress, Marie. Is that seconded?
Can I formally second that vote of thanks, Mr Mayor?
Thank you councillor Morgan. Are there any objections?
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
The vote of thanks is therefore agreed. Councillor Harris, to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to say that it has been an honour and a privilege to have served as the mayor of Nosley for the past two years. Myself, Bev, in my first year and Marie in my second year, I've all really enjoyed representing the borough of Nosley. We have met some fantastic people along the way. It seems really strange for my year to come to an end in this way, but I will take away with me many special memories. For example, I will never forget the events with the children from the borough and how amazing, talented they are. I was also very proud to be involved in the North West First Children's Launch. I was so touched by, I met a little girl whose life had been saved by the air ambulance. It was also great, it was also great to go out and see some of the fantastic work the local businesses are doing and it was really an honour to witness a couple of our businesses receiving the Honours Award. But I think the main thing I will take away with me is how nice the people of Nosley are. I've met so many lovely people, I couldn't name them all, but I feel like I must mention the brave ladies from Breastmates and the lovely Lily from the Lee Cooper Foundation. Before I do all, what I want to say is a few thanks. First of all, I want to thank the members of my charity committee for all their hard work and dedication and to everyone who has contributed to my charities throughout the year between us. This year I have raised nearly 29,000, which I am sure you will agree is an amazing amount. I know that my chosen charities will be extremely grateful for the donations they have now received. I would also like to say a thank you to the staff of the mayor's office for their support, guidance, hard work throughout my time as mayor representing Nosley. They are a credit to Nosley Borough Council and can I thank you all for that? I would like to thank you, the members, I have had some fantastic support in my two years and I couldn't have done it without you. And the guidance I have received from some of you, so thank you. I really have appreciated you being there for me. And finally, I would like to say a very special thank you to Marie for all her support throughout this last 12 months. In conclusion, Mr Mayor, I would like to wish you and your mayoress an enjoyable and memorable year in office, which I'm sure you are both looking forward to. My best wishes to you both. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Colleagues, move on to item number three, appointment of the leader of the council. Councillor Sean Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Congratulations on your new role. Can I please move Graham Morgan as leader of Nosley Council?
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Aston?
A great pleasure in seconding that motion, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Aston? Were any questions or comments?
There's no questions or comments, Mr Mayor.
Thank you Gemma. Are there any objections?
There's no objections either, Mr Mayor.
Thank you Gemma. The motion is carried. I declare that councillor Graham Morgan is elected leader of the council until the annual meeting in 2021. Item number four, the leader's report. Colleagues, the leader's report has previously been circulated for your information and for your noting. Councillor Morgan, I understand you would also like to say a few words.
Mr Mayor, a good afternoon colleagues. The whole country and indeed the whole world are adapting to what has been called the new normal. We in local governments are also adapting, not least in the way we are holding this important meeting in our political calendar. It is something of an understatement to say that these are unprecedented times. At our last full council meeting, when we set the 2020/21 budget, we were looking forward to an exciting year of investments and inclusive growth across our borough. Less than three weeks later, we entered lockdown as part of the global battle against coronavirus. I couldn't be prouder of the way our borough has risen to the challenge of supporting our vulnerable residents and businesses. We are making Nosley Better Together in action. Community groups, charities, volunteers, businesses, partner agencies, elected members and council officers working together to do whatever it does to help out. Sadly, the national government response has been shambolic in parts. PPE, shielding services, food stocks, employee safety and guidance have all seen massive delays and significant gaps. The seesaw announcements over whether we'll be funded for our work continue, which is nothing short of a disgrace, given that the government have asked us to step in and cover their failures, told us not to worry because they will do whatever it takes and now going back on those words and saying that they pay for everything. This council, our partners and our communities have stepped in to fill these gaps. We have proven that we can actually do whatever it takes. So I want to take this opportunity to say a few words specifically about our workforce. I'm sure you will join me in sharing my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to officers who during this unprecedented lockdown have shown tremendous dedication to the population of Nosley and continue to deliver services across our communities, day in and day out. On a daily basis, I've heard examples of council officers who have gone the extra mile. Just the other week, a woman out on her bike stopped me, at a safe social distance of course, and said she just wanted to thank me for the support the council had given her elderly parents. She said it had been fantastic and that was it. She just put her helmet back on and rove off. I think that just about sums it up colleagues. Businesses have been in touch to say that they operate in different areas of the country and that the support they have been given in Nosley is second to none. People normally will go out of their way when they have a complaint, but we have had recorded numbers of compliments in recent weeks. We have rightly heard so much about our NHS and the commitment of the staff on the front line and I'm sure all of us want to place on record our appreciation of those council officers, particularly in adults and children's social care, who have also been on the front line over the last several weeks. I also want to thank local refuse workers who are keen to collect all free spins. Also, our IT staff have worked tirelessly to introduce a whole range of new technology in a very short period of time to allow us to continue working at home. If I tried to list every one of the council officers who have gone that extra mile over the last few weeks, I think I'd be here all day. I also know I've been working there much longer and that for a lot of officers, there's been no such things as finishing work. So I'm sure you'll all want to join me in asking our chief executive to pass a very real appreciation and thanks to all council officers. They are a credit to the borough and to themselves. I could not be prouder of what we achieved in the face of such a challenge. I also think you as elected members need to give yourselves a real pat on the back. Unfortunately, I can't do it personally due to social distancing. volunteering, delivering food, getting help for the vulnerable residents or keeping in touch with people who need to know they're not alone, you have done an amazing job in supporting our communities. Throughout this period, there has also been numerous examples of Nosley Better Together in action. Our partners, community groups and residents have demonstrated that by working together, we can do almost anything. The community spirit is definitely alive and well in Nosley. As the leader of the council, I am immensely proud of everyone who has worked together to ensure that the residents and businesses of Nosley are supported through this very difficult time. We still have a long way to go, but I wouldn't want to be anywhere else or with anybody else when dealing with what lies ahead. We will get through this and we will come through even stronger with closer links for everybody working together. Thank you once again, everyone. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Morgan. I have been notified councillor Cashman and councillor Taylor want to speak about this matter. I will first invite councillor Cashman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to thank the leader as well for giving me this opportunity to, first of all, recognise the difficulties that local people have faced, but also the resolve that they've shown at the same time. It is truly heartwarming to see the hard work and dedication of council staff and key workers and I think that if this pandemic has shown us anything, it's shown us what and who is truly important in our society and it's given us at least a little bit of time to appreciate the real gravity of what these people do for us. As a liberal, I've always been a believer in the power of people to do the right thing if they're given a chance and I believe that we're seeing this in action right now. I'd personally like to thank the council staff for the dedication that they've shown every day and even more so at this time to steer the boat locally. I also believe that this period has shown how much people really do rely on their local authority and perhaps how easily that is forgotten at times as well. I sincerely hope that this experience sticks with people and that the appreciation for council workers continues. I've also loved the gratitude shown to our NHS staff and other key workers, Mr Mayor, particularly because that's important to me and quite personal as well. My partner and mother both work for the NHS along with many of my friends and family members and my sister's a teacher as well and many of these people have still had to go to work and be on the front line and I've done so at great personal risk to themselves at certain times and they need to know, I think, that we stand behind them and we applaud them for their work as well. Some of the key workers have caught the virus and for some of them, it's been a number of days off work, self-isolation and then a relative return to normality. But for others, it's not been the same story, it's been very different and it's with that in mind, Mr Mayor, that I'd like to pass my personal condolences on to councillor Terry Byron over the sad passing of his partner Linda. So my thoughts personally are with Terry and I can't believe to imagine what he's going through at this time. I've often found myself, Mr Mayor, thinking throughout this pandemic about loved ones that have been lost and the pain that that's caused for families. So I hope that the support is going to be in place for those that have lost their nearest and dearest and I'd like to take this opportunity, Mr Mayor, to add my voice along with the voices of other leaders from this council and the city region, calling on the government to give areas like ours the funding it needs and deserves to get people through this pandemic. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Cashman. I will now invite councillor Taylor to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And can I congratulate you on your role as the mayor of Nosley and welcome you back to your position as chair. A word from your previous tenure as chair, you've been fair and measured with conducting the meetings and I hope that continues this term. The standard of debate and the behaviour within the chamber has slipped over the past few months and I look forward to its hopeful improvements. I'd like to echo a larger one, what the leader and councillor Cashman said, try not to repeat anything, but from my point of view, it's heartwarming to see how our communities are pulled together in a crisis to protect each other. The pandemic really has shown everyone just who our essential workers are. It's our NHS staff, shop workers, police, logistic workers and of course our fantastic council frontline staff, who are working so hard to keep delivering key services and looking after our residents here in Nosley. And I do hope that senior officers pass on just how grateful all the members of this council are for the work that they do. I'd also like to pay tribute to the fantastic community faith and voluntary sector that we have here in Nosley, who have really stood up for our communities in our time of need, adapting and evolving to ensure that they could do their bit to support the relief efforts. The volunteer hub wouldn't be able to function at the level it does without their help and their determination and commitment to the people of Nosley. I recently spoke with Rachel Jones from One No, who shared with me a really interesting quote, which is that contributes art to society, what the bees ask the environments. We quite simply couldn't have delivered the response without the support from these groups. So on behalf of the Green Group on Nosley Council, I would like to say a great big thank you to all those groups and everyone else working so hard to support the people in this crisis. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Moving on to item number five, committee memberships and other appointments. Councillor Aston?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I move the recommendations contained in the...
Thank you councillor Aston. Councillor Sean Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to second them, recommendations.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Taylor, I understand you wish to move an amendment to this motion out of the order paper.
So I'm just trying to figure out where we are with this. Item five. Apologies, Mr Mayor. I believe that the amendment that I was sharing was an amendment to the constitution, not to the committee membership report.
Councillor Ron Gaffney, I believe that he wishes to second. Is that the same one? My understanding, Mr Mayor.
Can you go on and clarify it too?
Mr Mayor, can I just provide some clarity? I understand that the amendment relates to the appointments of chairs and vice chairs and having opposition members appointed. So that was in relation to item five, committee memberships and other appointments, was my understanding?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. I assume that goes in as item seven on an amendment to the constitution, but yeah, more than happy to. Is that okay, Mr Mayor, if I speak to the amendment now?
Yes. Councillor Taylor?
Councillor Taylor, at this time we just require you to move it and then councillor Gaffney will second it, you'll then have the opportunity to speak.
Okay, fantastic. Can I move the amendment, please, Mr Mayor?
Yes, thank you, councillor Donnelly. I believe you wish to second the amendment?
Yes, Mr Mayor. I'll formally second that amendment.
Thank you councillor Gaffney. Councillor Taylor, you wish to speak on the purpose of the amendment?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This amendment serves to make the allocation of chair and vice chairships committees fair and more democratic. I will first point out that the very role of the committees is to hold the cabinet and executive to account and scrutinise policy plans and decisions. It's a reasonable request, in my opinion, of the allocations for chair and vice chairships to be awarded proportionally, as is the membership of the committees. The Centre for Public Scrutiny released a report entitled 'Party Politics and Scrutiny in Local Government' and on page 30 of that report, it states, "An appropriate political climate for responsible but challenging scrutiny can be facilitated by the sharing of chairs of scrutiny committees. If the majority party claims all the chairs, then the opposition party may understandably feel aggravated and excluded and will be more tempted to play a traditional opposition role. If all the chairs are allocated to opposition members, that too gives an inappropriate message, namely that the scrutiny is primary and opposite activity, rather than requisite of the delicate balance between holding to account and supporting the executive." I think what the report highlights is that the scrutiny is the role of all members of this council. Therefore, it seems only fair that the opposition members are awarded scrutiny chairs and vice chairs on a proportionality basis. It is undeniable that occasionally public trust in Nosley Council is low. We have elected membership of all we can to modernise the structures of the council to make its business as open and transparent as possible. In the 46 years of this borough's history, there has only once been a non-labour mayor and the chairships of the council committees have been given to the majority party, despite the council having elected its opposition members for most of its existence. It's clear that the political demographics of the council are changing and it is possible that within the next 10 years, the majority will find itself losing majority control, in which case being able to work constructively with opposition groups will be of huge importance. This amendment seeks to begin that process of joint scrutiny and working collaboratively to achieve better outcomes for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Ron Gaffney, do you wish to speak?
No, Mr Mayor, that was eloquently put.
Councillor Gaffney, other members, if you wish to speak, will you please raise your electronic hand?
Mr Mayor, my electronic hand isn't on the right hand side, I'm not 100% sure why.
Oh Lynne?
I can't answer why it's not there, it should be in his participants panel on the right. Mr Mayor, would you like to invite councillor Cashman to speak on this matter if he wishes to?
Councillor Cashman, I take it that you wish to speak on this issue?
Only to support what councillor Taylor is saying, Mr Mayor, and just to bring that to your attention before we end up voting on anything. I think what councillor Taylor has said rings true and I think in the future, if there is a closer political balance, it would be in all of our interests to be able to work more closely and to share out spaces on a proportional basis.
work more closely and to share out spaces on a proportional basis.
Thank you, councillor Cashman. Has anybody else raised an electronic hand who wished to speak?
Mr Mayor, Terry Byron. Similar to councillor Cashman, I don't have the screen on the right hand side able to vote, but I would like to thank councillor Cashman his kind words as well.
For any councillor who's unable to see their hands, can I check that you have your participant panel on the right-hand side of your screen? To do so, you will...
Participants.
You need to click on the participant option.
Yep.
Okay, Mr Mayor, in answer to your question, the only member, yes, councillor Camilla Lashin wishes to speak.
Councillor Lashin, you wish to speak?
All I was going to say is, I've just clicked on the participants button on the, just below your chin, and that panel then opens.
Thank you, councillor Lashin.
Okay. The only other member who's looking to speak will be councillor Jane Aston.
Right, thank you, Gemma. Councillor Aston, as the mover of the original motion, you have the right to reply. Do you wish to reply, councillor Aston?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
Very well. Councillor Aston, you may speak.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, you'll be aware, as will all our members, that local government doesn't actually run a proportional representation system. We have a first-to-pass-the-post system. And as such, Nosley Council has 37 elected Labour representatives, and in my view, under the current system that we work by, to be frank, we've earned the right from the ballot box, the residents of Nosley have put us in a position of control in the Labour Council, and therefore, we have earned the right to have these positions, in my view. I wouldn't want anyone to be left with the idea that simply because members don't hold a position of chair or vice-chair in scrutiny, that they suddenly can't take part in the scrutiny process. Every single elected member in Nosley has the right, except, of course, the Cabinet, has the right to sit on a scrutiny committee and take full part in the scrutinising of every single decision-making that goes on in the council. So I wouldn't want people to be left with the idea that simply because they don't hold a chair or vice-chair position, that they can't take part and fully engage with the scrutiny process. So, Mr Mayor, the ruling Labour group will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Aston.
Before we go to the vote, could I just ask councillor Lashin to lower his electronic hand, please, so as it's lowered before the next part?
Gemma, I haven't got the hand either. Councillor, win.
Councillor, win. Can you click on your screen and click on the participants button?
Which one is this?
Councillor, when we'll just ask you to indicate verbally in a minute, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yes.
That's okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr Mayor, can you go on to the next stage, please?
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, I will now put the amendment as proposed by councillor Taylor to the vote. Those members in support of the amendment, please raise your electronic hand.
Do it that way. I'll have to do it that way, Frank, because I've got my...
Thank you, councillor.
Gemma, it's Colin. Could you repeat that? You dropped out.
Apologies. Sorry, councillor Diva, what was it you wanted clarifying?
Could you ask that question again? Sorry, you dropped out the audio.
Mr Mayor, would you like to put the last point again?
Councillor Diva, the question was: colleagues, I will now put the amendment as proposed by councillor Taylor to the vote. Those members in support of the amendment, please raise your electronic hand.
Mr Mayor, we have five members in opposition. In support of the amendment, apologies.
Is that confirmed, Gemma?
That's correct. Five people, five members are in support of the amendment.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that amendment is therefore lost. Are there any comments or questions on the original motion?
Councillor Dunn has raised her hand.
Councillor Dunn?
I think she's, I think she's put it back down now, so that might have been from before. There's no, nobody indicating any questions or comments, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. I will now put the original motion to the vote. Are there any objections to this motion?
No, Mr Mayor, there's no objections.
Colleagues, that is agreed. Moving on to item number six, timetable of meetings. Councillor Aston.
I'm moving the recommendations contained in the report, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Councillor Sean Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to second them recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Donnelly. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments?
There's no questions or comments, Mr Mayor.
Colleagues, are there any objections?
There's no objections, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. That is agreed. Item number seven, amendments to the constitution. Councillor Aston.
I formally move those recommendations contained in the reports, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Councillor Sean Donnelly.
Can I second them recommendations, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Donnelly. Councillor Carl Cashman, I understand you wish to move an amendment to this motion set out with the order paper?
Yes, happy to move that amendment set out in the order paper, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cashman. Councillor Ian Smith, I believe you wish to second the amendment?
Seconded, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Cashman, you wish to speak and explain the purpose of the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just briefly, to say that our approach to this has been consistent over the last two annual general meetings of the council. It's just that we believe that having the supplementary question for council meetings only adds to the opposition's ability to give that extra challenge and opportunity to scrutinise the leadership of the council. So surely that's a good thing, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cashman. Councillor Smith, do you wish to speak on this item?
Can you hear me, Mr Mayor?
Yeah. I can't, but I can now. Do you wish to speak, councillor Smith?
Yeah, it's very echoey, this end. Just nothing further to add.
Very well. Thank you, councillor Smith. Colleagues, if other members wish to speak, could you please raise your electronic hand?
Councillor Kai Taylor wishes to speak.
Councillor Taylor, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Gemma. Just very briefly to say that I do support the amendment. I do think that the supplementary questions were really useful. I don't think that they placed, I can't recall any times where they placed any cabinet members in a position where they were unable to answer them. They always provided answers, or answers were provided in writing, which were very gratefully received within a few days. So yeah, just to reiterate that, I will be supporting this. I do think being able to question, follow the question is important, so I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor. As the mover of the original, you have the right to reply. Do you wish to reply?
Please, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, thank you. As councillor Cashman said, this is a similar, or is exactly the same amendment, was placed before council at last year's AGM. Our view has not changed since then. As I said 12 months ago, there are a number of ways that opposition members can ask cabinet members or scrutinise cabinet members' decisions. They certainly don't have to wait till full council to do that. We always make ourselves available to opposition members' email, telephone, whichever. So we will not be supporting this amendment put through by the Liberal Democrats. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Colleagues, I will now put the amendment as proposed by councillor Cashman to the vote. Those members in support of the amendment, please raise your electronic hand.
The five, five members have indicated their support to this amendment, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that amendment is therefore lost. Are there any comments or questions on the original motion?
Councillor Cashman has his hand raised, so councillor Cashman would like to... ...this item.
Thank you, Gemma. Councillor Cashman?
My hand was still raised from the voting process.
Okay. Councillor Taylor's hand is also raised.
Councillor Taylor, do you wish to speak?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, similar position, my hand was still up from the original vote.
Very well. Gemma, are there... Is there anyone else wishes to speak?
No other members have indicated, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. The amendment is therefore lost. Are there any comments or questions on the original motion? On that, I will now put the original motion to the vote. Are there any objections to this?
There is one objection, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that is agreed. Moving on to item number eight, on outside body, 2020/21. Councillor Aston.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I formally move the recommendations contained in that report? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Councillor Sean Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to second them recommendations.
Councillor Donnelly. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments, Mr Mayor?
Thank you, Gemma. Are there any objections?
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that is agreed. Moving on to item number nine, team of members allowances, 2020/21. Councillor Graham Morgan.
Can I move that report, Mr?
Thank you, Councillor Aston.
Pleasure to move that report, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Colleagues, questions or comments?
Councillor Cashman wishes to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Gemma. Councillor Cashman, you may speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's just to clarify the comments that we gave to the independent panel originally. So the suggestion was to have, from us, was to have opposition group leaders as vice-chairs of committees, and for that to be used as a method of saving the council money. That would be done by keeping the opposition group leaders' special responsibility allowance the same, but also having them vice-chair a committee. I think the independent panel has misunderstood slightly, or perhaps there's been a miscommunication, but that's something we can discuss the upcoming municipal year.
Thank you, councillor Cashman. Colleagues, I will now put the motion to the vote. Are there any objections?
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that is agreed. Moving on to item number 10, approval of absence from council meetings. Councillor Graham...
Can I move that report, Mr Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillor Aston.
I formally second that report, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments, Mr Mayor?
Are there any objections?
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, that is... Item number 11, minutes. The minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 29th of January 2020 and the 2nd of March 2020 are before you. Are there any objections to their accuracy?
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Those minutes are agreed as a correct record. Moving on to item 12, any other items? I have no items of an urgent nature, and I declare the annual meeting closed. Members are asked to move to the agenda and the papers for the special meeting of committees. Special meetings of committees, item number one, appointments of chairpersons and vice-chairpersons. Councillor Aston.
I formally move the recommendations contained in that report, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Aston. Councillor Sean Donnelly.
Happy to second them recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Donnelly. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments?
There are no questions or comments, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Gemma. Colleagues, are there any...
There are no objections, Mr Mayor.
Colleagues, that is agreed. And finally, there are no further items. Can I thank you for your attendance, and I now declare the meeting closed. Thank you.